Good evening. Thank you all for being here. It's have six twenty-six. We'll start in about four minutes. I have the appointed hour of six thirty. Thank you all for being on time and being here for this work session. Call the meeting to order and first item of business, before we get the first item of business. Jim, any comments or observations or ready just to jump in?
I think we can just jump in, but I would like to add one thing. I heard just minutes ago, one of our ambulances went over the bank on the interstate. And if I hear more, I will update you. I haven't heard anything about injuries or our personnel who were involved, how they're doing, but I just heard that.
Thank you for sharing. I heard there was a house fire and then three wrecks on the interstate. So busy time for those folks. And we've got an appropriate proclamation for them in the regular meeting. So thank you and keep us posted. With that, want to welcome Hugh Latimer and his team, Tom Kalaski, I think. And I'm not sure who else you have in your entourage. But Hugh, thank you for being here and walking us through the Washington, Washington Street proposals that you have for us this evening. Welcome and take it away.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And we may shortly be joined by Steve McAllister, our Treasurer and Vice President for Finance and Administration. If you don't mind, I'm going to cut my video off because it's not that great to look at and say bam. About eighteen, oh, here, Steve, about eighteen months ago, Washington Lee started on an update of their, their master plan. And we engaged Sasaki and Associates from Boston and two other specialty consultants. Glavie and Holmes from Richmond and Good Clancy from Boston to help us on the master plan. And we've been working on that, as I say, for about, about eighteen months. And we were, we're hoping to complete the draft this spring and submit it to our trustees for approval at the May meeting. But with everything that's gone on, we couldn't arrange all of the, the presentations of the draft and such. So we've delayed that till the Board of Trustees meet in October. That's when we'd like to present the final. And then after that, if they bless it, to go ahead and, and submit it to the city so it can be included in the city's comprehensive plan. Tonight, though, we wanted to focus on one particular component of the master plan under development. And that is what we see is our opportunity to define a campus gateway. Because everybody knows our, we really have not had a clear indication of where the city ends and university starts. Or the university starts and the city ends. And wanted to really take an opportunity, if possible, to sort of physically define our brand and let the city also physically define their, their brand. What gave us a real opportunity here is our admissions department is buried way back in campus in Gillum Hall. And our financial aid office is separated significantly from that. And it makes it difficult for visitors coming to the university to find their way about. And wanted, wanted to change that. And a wonderful opportunity was being able to tear down early fielding at the corner of Liam Washington Street. It's a building that has not served us well. And we can take the, the offices and departments in early fielding dispersed into other locations. And that opened up basically a corner side of Liam Washington Street. There was one, wonderful place for a gateway for us. So again, in that site, we would relocate in a new building, the Admissions and Financial Aid Center. And also include within that welcoming center and a lot of meeting spaces to really energize that space. Working with that, we had the opportunity to renovate the interior of Evans Hall into a large meeting and presentation space with improvements to acoustics and AV and other features. It will give us a large meeting space that we, we haven't had on campus. Additionally, there's right now our culinary kitchen that would support the hospitality function. So that was one corner of, of Washington and Lee that would be energized by this. Right across Lee Avenue, we're also looking at, at that spot to be our new institutional museum. And that project is a little bit of a longer planning duration. But in the space behind that and let me pull up the screen on my, my screen.
Hugh, this is Frank. With the information that we received with our packet, are you on page three of thirty-two project goals?
Yes, I would. I'm having some problems right now having that come up on my screen.
We receive that information ahead of time. I'm not sure.
Yes. And I, what I'll discuss today will be that exact information.
Okay.
Hugh, do you want me to pull up the packet with the presentation in it? Okay.
Please do.
Hugh, while she's making that adjustment or getting that available for you. I'm just curious, when you talked about the Evans Meeting Room, how many folks are you planning for that facility?
Um, it will really depend on the type of seating. But upwards of, of, of I'll have to look that number up.
Fair enough.
Be well, well over several hundred.
Okay.
If you're talking about lecture seats.
Right.
So it'll be far more we can get in any other museum. Okay. Thank you. So, so right over here is this, the site we're looking about, the institution museum. And right behind here on university property, we're looking at, at some structured parking to be built, which would support both the museum and the additional parking for the, for the admissions and visitor center and those, those needed meeting spaces. So all that, all that working together. And what you're seeing now is getting the existing conditions. And not only do we see this corner being the new gateway, but we really have the opportunity to come all the way up this block on Washington Street to do really what we consider to be a transformative change, if you will. You'll see in a moment, replacing Baker and Davis. But for this second, as you come up the hill, right at the crest of the top of the hill, you'll be facing the new entry to the new Duchess White Indoor Athletic Facility. Right now, you can see the entablature, the entryway at the very end of the project will be providing our customary Washington and Lee columns. But it'll be a real visual link going, going up the hill, if you will. Um, I think it was about a little over a half a decade ago, we created this park in front, in front of Gillum. And with that, we created this raised brick crossing to denote a space for pedestrians to cross, particularly from, from Gaines and to a certain degree from, from Davis. That has been a great success for us in terms of traffic calming. And that was sort of one, one key people where we're taking from, from this opportunity is what could we do in terms of additional features that would provide even more traffic common, either, either by slowing vehicles down or by encouraging vehicles to maybe take an alternate route like West Nelson Street. And then that's right here. So we go to the next sheet. We're going to look at option one. Option one is to continue Washington Street as a two-way. And let me, let me show you right here. This is a little bit of our planned development with the new buildings. Here we have that Admissions and Financial Aid Center, looking right over here, across the street here with this new crossing, if you will, would be the museum. The parking we don't show at the moment. And this with an outdoor plaza is connected to, once again, Evans Hall. The new buildings are the ones that are the darkest gray. And moving up Washington Street, we come to the new Williams School Building. And that is providing additional classrooms, faculty offices, other space that we cannot fit within a renovated Hockley Hall. And it is a setback here along Washington Street with this two-way traffic. We were looking at, again, replicating to a certain degree, that traffic calming with, with, with different paving and, and, and features to, once again, slow, slow the traffic down. So the components of the streetscape are, once again, a two-way, one-way each way. The curb to curb distance does not change. Bike lanes are added from, from Lee Avenue up to the raised crossing. Then from here on up, because the roads narrow, or we do something called share-o. And that is with, with painting, you have a shared bicycle and vehicular route. We improve the, the street pedestrian lighting on, on both sides. And we bury above-ground electrical lines. Currently, our above-ground electrical lines come up to about this point in front of the, the stables. In the next future projects, we would also like to bury those lines on Lee Avenue if possible. Here, we have a, a cross-section, if you will, going up Washington Street, a little bit past Lee Avenue. And this is the existing conditions of the street right now, where you have the two-way travel. And you have the, the walkways here. Bicycles have to be in the road. The existing overhead power lines, and you can see the walks and then the lawns beyond. Right below here, we, we could pull this up a teeny bit. Thank you. We have the proposed, which again, with the buried lines, we just have the new lighting and lighting over here. And within the, the two-way traffic, we would be able to define bike, bikes going either way with or, and against, against the traffic. And the curb distance stays the same. What we do is we decrease the lanes, if you will, for traffic to provide space for the bicycles to, to travel at that location. So that's not a, not a major change, if you will, in terms of, of Washington Street, mainly improvements. But we wanted to, to share another, another scheme with you. And we wanted to do this now so that you all would see this proposal before hearing it from, from someone else. Because it is a significant change. And we're talking about going from basically Lee Avenue up to Graham Lee's with one-way traffic. And that is traffic moving up the hill in this direction. What, what this will do for us is, is really significantly further minimize traffic on, on the, on Washington Street. The concept here is that we're able to, to significantly narrow, narrow the street. And as you, you come up, we're showing a truck turning radius. Currently, some of our, our biggest trucks would come up Nelson Street, come down to about this point. And then we would back into our loading and delivery area beneath Cannon Green. And they would continue to do that in this scheme. The difference is as they leave, we're creating a widened paved area for, for even the largest trucks to come and make a turn and go down Washington Street here and out Nelson either way. Currently, they tend to come down Washington Street back right into the middle, middle of the city. So that would be, be a major benefit for us, basically getting rid of, of, of most of our truck traffic on, on Washington Street. What we would need to do is engage a, a traffic planner to help us with, with signage to make sure that, that vehicles that come up here don't want to come into the Washington Lee campus and find out, whoops, they have to stop here and turn around. So we would have to plan that, that signage where it's located and what it says very carefully. That'd be a very important component. And let's go down to option two. Again, you saw this before as the existing conditions. And right below it, if we scroll down a teeny bit further, we can see the new. So maybe go up a little bit so we there we go. Perfect, perfect, perfect. So here you're seeing that the, the road is Washington Street itself is, is narrowed from the, the one, one lane, a way of traffic and the bike needs to be right here and would have some sort of paving differential so that they're actually buffered, buffered lanes. Right past the bicycle lanes, you would have the new lighting, a green swath, if you will, on this side to mimic the lawn that's on, existing lawn on the other side. In that green area, that's where we could run some of our underground utilities. And at that location, be able to, to do maintenance and work on them without having to shut the street down. And then the same new lighting and, and the same, same walkways. Um, go down a little bit further. We have a very sort of preliminary, if you will, bird's eye view, if you will, looking up, up from Lee Avenue up Washington Street. This really shows Washington Street mainly as, as it is. We weren't able to, to do the future work here. But again, here's our, our, our museum's going to be next to Mattingly House. The Financial Aid Center with its main focus on the corner, connected through this terrace and physically back here to the Evans Hall. And then here's our new Williams Building here, across the way from, from, from President's House and Hole Camp. Really excited about this and, and there, there were a lot of people in the university community as we were starting to, to plan what we might be able to do on this side of the campus. So really wanted us to, to get rid of Washington Street and continue the lawn all the way over to these buildings. And that took a little bit of convincing of some people that that really was not practical. President Dudley really does want to be able to drive his car up to the garage or probably should say travelers' stable. And obviously, just as important, we need to have a safe route for emergency vehicles to come up, come up Washington Street and service our buildings. As far as the master plan goes, it's totally appropriate to include in a master plan, two options, two differing options, if you will. But we really haven't worked this out in detail yet in terms of the exact timing. But probably in about six months, it'd be beneficial for us to, to know if we have the opportunity to do this one-way traffic on Washington Street because at that point, we would have gotten fairly far along in our completion of construction documents for the new Williams Building. And while we could probably build that building with the existing Washington Street and no changes. If we, in the future, went to the one-way option, we would probably, our civil engineers would probably say that there would be some things that we would be tearing out and building back again. So probably the most efficient thing for us to do would be to incorporate those changes in front of New Williams School Building in terms of one-way traffic and then down the hill at, at a time when we, we set the construction for the Williams School Building. And we had plenty of time before then. But again, our the main point right now is to make sure that we made you all aware of this before we start meeting with, with other constituents and groups. And, and then they start talking about possible changes to Washington Street.
Thank you, Hugh. Obviously appropriate for questions and I want to point out, we have several, or a couple of members of council whose spouses work at Washington Lee because we're not voting on anything this evening. I'm going to deem it with the approval of our attorney that it's okay for folks with connections and a potential or perceived conflict of interest through Washington Lee to participate in the discussion. I'll open the floor. There, anybody who has any particular questions getting started?
Well, at least for the sake of full disclosure, I was presented with this information a few months ago on a committee that I'm on at Washington and Lee, the Historic Preservation Protector. And I never said a word. So I want you to know, I kept my mouth shut. And this is the first presentation and the first that council has talked about this.
Very good. Thank you, Marilyn.
I've got a couple of questions, if I may. The street in question, West Washington Street, that is owned by the city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it would continue to be owned by the city if modifications were made. And who would, so I would, I would assume the city of Lexington would continue to maintain it, plow it, pave it. I think we paved it a year ago or was that two years ago now? But so am I just correct? It would stay within our, within our inventory?
Yeah, I would think so unless we, we made a different arrangement. But I don't believe so.
My experience, and I know it's that of many members of the public, is that the route, the West Washington Street, for many years, it's a de facto bus stop for kids being picked up by, by cars, by their friends. Of course, the quad isn't there anymore, those dorms, Baker, Davis and Gillum, no kids live there anymore, but Graham Lee's. If it's one lane, right now, I think you have signs posted that say absolutely no stopping, no pausing your car and waiting for five kids to jump into it. But they do. And so when it's one lane, will there be a, a pool-in area for all the kids that are just going to keep doing that?
That's a good point. I think we could provide that. And, you know, the devil's in the details, but we're also considering a bit of a, a pull-in in order to, to create a better entry into, into the Lee's House Garage. So, so we are thinking about doing some changes on that side too. So yes, I think that could be accommodated.
You know, it's, it's amazing that two years ago, it was actually May twenty-second, but two years ago, Mr. McAllister actually presented at a Lexington forum that was put on by RAC, kind of just an update at that time of, of some strategic planning and so forth that WNO was doing. And so I went back and I listened to that presentation that happened exactly two years ago on a rainy night, actually. If you remember, it was incredibly rainy on May twenty-second, two years ago. But during that presentation, and it was couched by saying, everything is up in the air and it could change. And of course, here we are two years later and everything has practically changed in the world. But there was talk about twelve Lee Avenue, where on some of the diagrams you've presented, have a museum. But also, over the years, I've heard it referenced as a potential parking structure. I've heard the words joint arrangement with the city. In any position to talk more about parking, because right now I hear about a museum, I hear about a event space. And I just wonder if there's any, what, what the thought is for the people that might be drawn to your admissions facility and everything, where they would park and how that would work.
What we're, what we'll need to do when we get into detailed planning to better understand exactly really the, the, the borders, if you will, of really the 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 borders, if you will, of of parking available. For instance, would parking be available underneath the new building because of the the large drop off of the site? Or 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 would it come up to the side of the building if we need additional um, underground floors for the museum? We aren't far enough along to know that at this point, but we've been carrying thoughts that at the minimum, we'd be able to provide something like 150 parking spaces um, in in this area, which would be significant in terms of helping support that admissions, financial aid and and the museum.
Would the museum have any uh, retail uh, component to it, restaurant retail component?
Uh, we we really haven't planned. I'm sorry, we just really aren't far along. Um, it would be unusual for a museum like that not to have some sort of retail component. A restaurant, I I'm not really sure. One, one thing is the site is not enormous. And we have a lot of of ideas about what can go into that museum that that might make it difficult to find space for a restaurant. But once again, that's premature.
Well, of course, and my questions, I'm just getting them out in the open because over the years, as as everyone knows, you know, you're you're looking to define, I I think you're, you know, the the boundaries of the of the university. And as 12 Lee Avenue in a way expands the boundaries, uh, some would say you're defining them, some would say they're expanding them. And I've already heard that in the community in this project and that's why I'm just bringing it up now as we as we talk about it. So I I just appreciate, I certainly understand details are are far out still. So thank you very much.
I can remember a few years ago when we were, I think, doing construction of the Nelson Street Bridge, that this Washington Street Route was quite significant to take care of some of the traffic. Um, and if it's proposed to have this portion of Washington Street one-way, could it remain wide enough to have two-way traffic in the event of an emergency route that would be needed maybe on a temporary basis? Or would you have to have the amount of space that you have there on this drawing for bike? Shadows, uh, walkway and green space?
We will have to make this, even if it's one-way, we will have to make the road wide enough that the fire department feels comfortable being driving a fire truck up this road and getting by a stalled parked vehicle or whatever. That that is a given.
Okay.
This is Leslie. Have there been any issues with the raised crosswalk as far as plowing and maintenance? It looks very nice, but we've been deterred from doing it in other parts of the city for that reason. I didn't know if there had been any issues.
Not not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And I like the, I definitely like the bike lanes. I uh, I hope more students and faculty will use that because parking is an issue. I work at St. Patrick's, which is right behind the new Williams School. We we get a lot of students parking there and I hope that during this project that W N L will work with the church, particularly when we have services.
The members of council have questions?
Yeah, this is Dennis. Just um, just to clarify, you you you, I think David asked whether whether the city owned this Washington and paid to maintain it. And and you you did say that that was the current arrangement, but possibly could look at a different arrangement. And I mean, my concern is if this becomes a one-way street. I I I'm just curious if if the city has made and Washington Lee have made different arrangements with other streets. Are there other streets on the Washington Lee Campus that have been given over to Washington and Lee and are no longer supported by the city?
There are, there are streets within with campus that are certainly fully taken care of by the university such as General's Way. But I don't know at what point the the city may have owned those or not, that that street.
And there's nothing on this this section of Washington except for Washington Lee Properties, correct?
That's correct. Um, the last piece of property um, on Washington Street is Grace Church before you get to totally own university property.
Dennis, you raise a good point. I'm not positive. I don't know a a lot of the uh, history of Lexington um, real estate. But when you look at Ann Smith School, which Kai-Sai fraternity is in now, St. Patrick's and on down, a lot of that was part of the city and Washington Lee has expanded arguably onto that side of Washington. Over the years. Any other members of council have questions? Hugh, I've I've got a couple. Number one, thank you for sharing this information. Pictures are always um, amazing and interesting and what actually transpires sometimes can be something uh, very different. So I'm eager for you to keep us apprised as you progress. So so that we're all aware of what's taking place and I think that Washington Lee has are exceedingly cool. You mentioned early fielding not serving well. I am old enough to remember when the cockpit was there and served really well, so.
Was that that bar down where the mailroom is?
It it was indeed. Restaurant of sorts.
Okay.
Uh, but a couple of questions. Baker and Davis, are they housing students currently?
Uh, no, let me talk about them for a minute. Um, Baker for about um, in nine, nine years or so, has has merely merely been swing space for offices. That's where we we um, had the faculty that came out of the Colonnade Buildings as we renovated. That's where they were were located. Right now, um, the coaches from the indoor athletic facility are 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 there and they'll be moving out shortly when the new facility opens in the summer. Right now, and and what we're thinking we will do, and and once again, this is early, but our our thoughts are um, should the university be able to open for students to come back in the fall? We will turn Baker for a short period of time back over to student resident use. But that would that would be probably um, no longer than two terms. Davis, right now, on the um, the main and upper floors is our IT group. And on the lower level, it's our health center. And we did a lot of work with with the Saki Associates trying to understand, is there a better location for our health center? Um, right now, I think it's called Early Fielding Way, that runs sort of behind the buildings, is is gets a little congested with with delivery trucks and mail trucks and and such, um, and ambulances going to the health center. But really, that was um, the best location uh, to remain for a health center in order for ambulance traffic to come unimpeded and for the health center to be very convenient for our basically first-year students, if you will. So we really couldn't find a better better spot for that. So in the new Williams Building, what you see, the other side of the building in the same lower level, will be the new Wellness Center. And this little wing here will be the Counseling Center. So they will work in tandem, if you will. The Counseling Center is one of the components that leaves early fielding when it's demolished. And we will find other locations for um, our IT group. They do not need to be um, on campus or right adjacent to. We have a couple of of ideas in the community where they can go.
Just to confirm what I heard you say, in the new Williams School Building, the infirmary and counseling would remain in that facility?
They'll be parked, yeah, there will, there will be new buildings, but they will be located within the facility. Yes.
Very good. With the admissions and financial aid office, um, help me understand where the where the parking would be for those?
Yes, um, it's the open lot between um, between Jefferson Street and 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 Lee Avenue. Between Washington Street and Nelson Street, that that center area, if you will, the lower or lower level. That is where we would build the parking deck.
Okay, o- off of Lee Avenue?
Yeah, and the the one benefit is that Lee Avenue in that area is is significantly higher than than Jefferson Street. So you could sort of come on Lee Avenue and enter the the top level of a parking deck and then move your way down and 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 exit at the lower level to go on on to Jefferson Street. So that means that we'll have more, we would have to have less space for a ramp, if you will, can dedicate that to parking. That works in our favor.
Right. And help me understand, when we look at the Institutional History Museum, there are three facilities between Washington and the open lot where you're proposing the parking deck. Uh, what I know is the old Sigma Chi House, um, and then a a white, uh, I think of foreign language building.
Yeah, yes, yes. Um, so right on the corner, we have Matty and the House, and we think that would certainly remain. And next to that, when you spoke with the white one, that Casa Espana, that's sort of a Spanish house, if you will. And next to that is is the Chavis House. And the Chavis House in Casa Espana would come down and those programs would be relocated to other um, theme houses that we have. Um, so we're talking about taking down those two houses for museum and possibly linking into the Mattingly House with Institutional History Programming Space. But again, um, that's our plan at at the moment. We really have to do further testing as we move along and understand the exact programming size of the museum.
Those can move along depending upon questions. Council members have other questions?
I do. Uh, this is Marilyn again. Um, the the Chavis House and the Spanish House don't have any historic significance. I was wondering about the Chavis House, is it just named that but doesn't have any history behind it?
Um, in terms of 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 the person being there, that's correct. It's just named.
And um, as part of the project goals, number three states and experience, uh, will there be conversations about handicapped accessibility, especially wheelchair accessibility in conjunction with uh, better places to park for the people who have limitations?
Absolutely. We're studying that right now with a a companion plan, if you will, access the um, campus accessibility plan. You know, what what's a challenge for us though is sort of coming up Washington Street, it's naturally hilly. Um, but in terms of the the cross circulation, we will certainly be able to handle that. Meaning accessibility needs and removing barriers.
Thank you so much.
If I, a couple of quick questions, um, just so that I'm clear, the, some of the proposals are, you have one raised crossing already at the Quad essentially by Graham Lee's and you're proposing one additional one on Lee Avenue, is that correct?
That that's correct.
Okay.
And and even with one-way traffic, if that's if that's the way we go, where we are are in favor of that because um, it it really um, makes drivers aware to start paying attention because they're coming to this different paving pattern and elevation or whatever. And that's where we want to locate that specifically where a lot of students will be crossing the street.
Exactly. You know, it's it's only 15 or so years ago that West Washington Street had parking on both sides of the road, all the way up to the freshman dorms, up to Graham Lee's on both sides, because you could park in front of Evans Hall parallel parking. And of course, just up until a few years ago, you could park parallel along West Washington Street from Grace Episcopal all the way up to Lee House. And so just in the last years, we've eliminated all of those parking spots to, I guess, enhance pedestrian safety. And of course, cars are wider and everything.
Sure.
Would the construction of the Institutional History Museum and if a parking garage does end up going in 12 Lee Avenue area, I guess we would be looking at eliminating significant parking on Lee Avenue also. Um, I I guess that would be a next uh, point. I, again, I'm just kind of mentioning that as we think and look to the future. No, not really a question, I'm just just mentioning that. But what's interesting and everyone that drives in Lexington knows this is the crosswalks. Kids just walk out in the crosswalks. And of course, the law is that we yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk. So we need to watch for pedestrians at all times. But um, I I just, I I I get nervous um, as we take traffic, put more traffic on Route 60 because everyone admits the most dangerous intersection is the intersection at Lenfest Center. Because people are coming down the hill Route 60, they're coming into Lexington and W N L kids are always crossing on those those crosswalks to that side of your campus. And when we, if we potentially adjust uh, West Washington Street, if we potentially um, adjust Lee Avenue. I mean, they all have unintended consequences of putting more and more cars on Route 60. And I just wonder if there's any consideration about encouraging W N L kids to use the bridge over Route 60 instead of just walking right out and hoping that cars going 40 or 50 stop for them.
Yeah, I mean, that that's a goal too. And we've worked with the traffic. We're hoping a traffic engineer would help us um, with with some ideas how to better encourage the students to take that bridge. And then there may be some some features that will make that happen. We're about to we're about to be able to open that up again with with the completion of the indoor athletic facility, that that area.
Will the existing parking garage, will the top level uh, entry exit continue to be, will be two-way or will it be one-way?
It'll be two-way.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right.
This is Michelle. I just had a quick comment, um, just as following up with David's observation of what happens on Route 60. Obviously, it's exciting to see what you have planned, um, including the Institutional History Museum. I'm assuming that this will bring more people uh, in traffic to this part of of the city. Um, and so the, there will be impact, I guess, on the uh, continuing on Washington Street. Just on that little block section where there's the ice cream shop and also crossing over to the other side of Washington Street. And that area is also very tight and crossing the street in that area is also pretty dangerous. So I guess as we move and think about this plan, I'm just be curious to know about the impact and if there'd be any studies on the effect of other parts of these streets areas near this this Washington corridor, so.
Again, I think that's another thing for the traffic um, plan is to to help us, help us with.
Thank you.
I'll say I have one other question because traffic is a issue in that area, especially uh, like for instance, at Kai-Sai, they've either doubled the number like, for instance, at Kai Sai, they've either doubled the number of kids that are there living there, or at least come there for lunch, because I know, because I have to kick them out of the St. Patrick's parking lot all the time. So I do love the idea of the bike lane, hoping more kids will use that. How is that bike lane going to connect with the rest of campus, particularly down towards housing, so that kids really will use it?
Down toward housing? I mean, Graham Lee's and Gaines?
No, I was like the junior housing.
Oh.
Use it, is it accessible to the rest of campus?
And sororities too.
Mm-hmm, right.
Connectivity for the main campus and third-year housing and sororities.
Right.
Yeah.
You can't do it on two wheels, you have to be on Route 60.
You actually could go through Cannon Green and then cross the bridge over there, which takes you sort of over near the law school, you know, the Williams, I mean, the stadium, you can actually do it that way.
By the stadium.
You have to carry that, you have to carry your bike down some steps.
Exactly, yeah.
Hey, I have one last question. You mentioned that you were interested in burying electrical lines. Where on Washington Street would that start? And the reason why I'm asking is, is like, if you're on Washington, between Jefferson and Lee, like, in front of the Halal House, like, there's very narrow sidewalks there, and half of it's taken up by the electrical poles. I'm just curious, like, how far down you would go on Washington Street with that?
I think we would certainly go down as far as here. And I think if we went further, we would need the blessing of Grace Church, I think, because of.
Hugh, I don't think you say here.
Yeah, where did you mean when you said here?
We can't, your indicator.
I'm sorry, you can't see it, I'm sorry. Really, right, right across from the Admission and Financial Aid Center, the lower portion of that. Yeah, right there. At least there. It'd be nice to go even further down, but that would require, I think, the agreement of Grace Church, because of the effect in front of their property.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So I do want to touch again on the connectivity issue. So where, how will these bike lanes help you for Gaines dorms? What dorms will benefit, or where will the students benefit from the bike lanes?
I think it's going to particularly benefit students in Gaines and Graham Lee's coming down the hill and going either these buildings or Halal, or taking a ride and going through the main lawn, in particular. For those that want to go down the hill to Nelson Street, because they want to go to Lenfest or someplace else in the community, by having those, that share, shared area, it's just going to be a safer means of biking on a public street. But going downhill the other way toward Lee, particularly in option two of one-way traffic, will have a specific, specific bike lanes. You couldn't drive in them unless you had an emergency.
One final question for me, I promise. When you have bike lanes that are dedicated, like you just referenced, and you're not allowed to drive in them except for an emergency, and if this became a one-way street, does Washington and Lee Security have traffic enforcement powers? Because my experience is, people will park in the bike lanes to pick up their friends at Graham Lee's or pick up and drop off their friends in that area. So if people pause in the bike lanes for 10 minutes or five minutes, or violate a traffic law in that area, will that be Lexington City Police that are enforcing that, or WNL Security?
I think it's Lexington City Police. When we have people parking where they're not supposed to in fire lanes at the Opera Division Housing, I believe it's the city police that will ticket them, I believe. I think the same thing would be here.
Back in the day, when I was a student, it was WNL Security that if you had a freshman parking sticker, if you had a freshman parking sticker and you were parked anywhere in the city of Lexington and not in the freshman parking lot, it was WNL Security that wrote you a ticket, even if you were parked on a city street and towed you.
And towed to?
Up to Jacktown Road.
I don't think we have any tow trucks at the moment, but.
No, it was, it was a member of the public towed you, not a WNL truck.
You know, I'm sorry if I'm being a little wishy-washy with answering, but a lot of your questions are where the devils are in the details, and we'll have to work through some of those, and with some experienced help, we'll find solutions.
Hugh, one quick question. In looking at the parking deck that's proposed, do you have a proposed number of parking spaces that would be available?
Ideally, it would be in the magnitude of 150. And that's a plus or minus, depending how the parking deck physically connects to the Institutional History Museum. If it abuts it or goes underneath it, we'll have to see what our opportunities are there.
I'll give you the opportunity for the final word, but I'll also say that I would hope that Washington and Lee will provide to the city a timeline of your expectations. This blue sky and looking at significant changes to the flow of traffic and access on Washington Street and significant changes to Lee Avenue are breathtaking, to say the least. And being able to be a good partner and be able to provide timely answers or discussions with you all would be very, very helpful by knowing your timeline, knowing that it's going to change as things like COVID and other things rear their ugly head, or even some positive things that may advance it or slow it down. But the plans that you have are spectacular. Personally, I'm very grateful for the thoughtful investment in the city of Lexington and for the partnership working to look to the future and see what this looks like, to consider some old ideas, perhaps freshmen being in their lot or getting towed, as David pointed out, I don't call that, but policies can evolve. And that timeline will certainly be very, very useful. I'm also mindful that every year, there's a new crop of students that have to be educated, not just in the academics, but also navigating the campus and the city of Lexington, and continuing to work together so that those bikes find their ways to other parts of the town for restaurants and Friday's Alive and things of that nature, I think, is critical. So I'll let you have the final word for anything that you'd like to bring up, and thank you for your time.
Well, I'd really like to thank you for the opportunity to share this, and we'll be able to get a timeline to you very shortly. We have a lot of that information available, we'll just need to pull it together for you.
Excellent, excellent. Again, thank you and your posse for being here, the work of Tom and Steve and the rest of the gang. So thank you, we will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay and hang out with us for the next while for our work session and regular meeting and discuss budget.
I think I had to boat myself home.
Fair enough, fair enough. We'll shift gears and jump into the third quarter financial report, and I'll call on Jake Adams. Or Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Gary is actually going to handle this part of the financial report for you.
Thank you, he drew the short straw.
Good evening. In the BMI for the time, because it's now, according to my computer, 7:24. I'll try to keep my remarks as brief as I can. Had COVID-19 not occurred, we would be reviewing a very positive report tonight. But as we all are painfully aware, so much has changed in the time that's elapsed since the close of the quarter. I'm going to focus most of my attentions on, or comments on general fund revenues and what we think that we're seeing, at least preliminarily, on those revenues that we thought that would be changing most. The early indications on property tax collections, although we have a ways to go to June 5th, seem to be rather positive. It doesn't seem that the collection rate has in any significant way been adversely impacted by the virus, so that is positive news. But I would, I'll point out to you that, as in every year, most of those tax collections come in the last few days before the due date. So I'm just giving you a preliminary indication. Sales tax for the, that we received in the month of April was still up from last year, but we would have expected that with those transactions having taken place in the month of February. So it'll be interesting to see what the collections are that come from the state during the month of May. Certainly, you would be interested to know how meals taxes are coming in, how they came in during the month of April, and what they're looking like so far in May. Even though the meals taxes during, or the collections during the month of April were 37% less than last year, they were still more than $8,000 higher than what we had expected when we came up with the revised revenue figures for the current year. Through the 21 days so far in May, the amount has been nearly $11,000 greater than what we had in those revised figures. So I think that it would be safe to say, and again, this is just a preliminary indication, it'll certainly be important to see how the summer months go. But at least initially, those meals taxes don't seem to be off as dramatically as we had suggested that they might be to counsel. Lodging taxes during the month of April, again, this would be based on March transactions, were only a little bit more than $7,200 compared to over $45,000 the year prior. But they were still above what our revised expectations were for the month of April. And in May, even though we had assumed that there would be no receipt of lodging taxes, they've actually been a little bit more than $17,500 so far in the month of May. So at least, again, on a preliminary basis, it would appear that perhaps lodging taxes may not be off as dramatically as we once thought that they might be. So that is basically an update in addition to the information that you can see in the report. Now, in the revenue as reported on the third quarter report, only significant issue that I saw was that the reimbursement from the state for CSA services were, are running considerably under what we expected them to be for the year. But that's both good news and bad news. Bad news on the revenue side, but good news on the expense side, because correspondingly, those expenditures are off by a similar amount of money. So those are the things that I think are most important in the general fund. And then the interest of time, if I may, I'll just continue on and then open up for questions, Mr. Mayor, at the end of the presentation. But I think the school fund, the report and the comments that were made in the report are pretty straightforward and don't require additional comment from me at this time. Utility fund, the revenues at the end of the third quarter were right on, in line with what expectations were. But as the students left town, both at BMI and Washington Lee, the April billing period, which would cover the two-month period from point in February to a point in April, they were actually 11% less than last year. You might be interested to note that in the preparation of the FY21 final budget, we're assuming that we'll sell 19 million less gallons of water than what we sold in FY20. So we have taken into account that there will probably be less consumption of water. Now, there was one item that I noted in the written report that was quite concerning to me, and that is the cost paid for treatment of raw water to the MSA. We were running well above budget, pointed out that certainly we would have to have more appropriation to cover that for the year. Since the original writing of the report, I added a postscript there, and I'm going to, in just a moment, call on Jeff Martin, which I believe is available over the phone for us tonight. They found a significant water leak on the BMI post, which wasn't going through any water meters, obviously, and therefore, we weren't collecting any revenue for it, but it's costing us money to purchase that water from the MSA. And it appears that on an annual basis, that probably amounts to approximately 55 million gallons. So with the, getting that old line that was, had the leak in it, switched over to the new infrastructure in that part of post, that will save over $200,000 of water purposes on an annual basis from the MSA, so very significant. So Jeff, if you're on the line, I'll close my mic for the time being and let you comment on what Public Works did in conjunction with BMI to identify that leak.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, to highlight what Gary said, and to go back a little bit, we've actually did, Public Works in conjunction with BMI staff, had done a series of bench tests with the master meters dating back to late October and November of 19. We had a lot of hurdles to cross to even get to the point of being able to identify leaks on posts. And one hurdle was to make sure the master meters are active. Second one is to make sure BMI was isolated. Early, we cut in an isolation valve between the campuses of WNL and BMI in November, and then later found that we could not put BMI out of water subsequently through December and January. We found two, I always call them illicit, but that's the improper word, but we found two connections to our main street water line that were not going through the master meters. One is valved off currently, waiting a design resolution. The other one was permanently capped. So in January, we were able to successfully shut down posts, hydrants are dry, buildings are dry essentially, and get much more accurate comparison between our master meters and. and get much more accurate comparison between our master meters and present individual building meters. At that time, we were looking at a twenty thousand cubic foot a day discrepancy between our masters and individual meters. We proceeded on to coordinate zero usage periods with BMI to determine whether, is it a leak or is it, do we have unmetered connections? Now, we did find a few unmetered connections, but nothing that would reconcile that, that amount of discrepancy between the readings. And by happenstance, as everybody's aware, BMI's had their post-infrastructure project going on late summer, fall to present. Thomas Wagner in the office noted on April 8th that for whatever reason, unbeknownst to us at the time, that the master meter readings went down virtually to zero first time since they were ever turned on. When we contacted BMI, we found that their contractor had isolated a certain portion of the existing parade loop, it'd be the southwest quadrant, to do a tie-in. We later replicated that, found the master meters went to zero. We, at that point in time, is about April 20th, I believe it was, they were able to permanently leave that zone, shut off, because all services were transferred to the new lines they constructed. So nobody's technically laid their eyes on the leak. We know what zone it's occurred. According to BMI, when the Anderson water line is complete sometime early summer, all the existing or old post water lines will be abandoned and it should go away. But currently, it's contained, and Gary is correct. That amount of water would equate to about two hundred thousand dollar year savings. Any questions with that long saga?
Jeff, one question from Frank, and it may not be aware, but what impact does that have on our MSA that we're obviously a member of?
I have, since November, actually since October, I have coordinated all our tests that we have done, all our findings with Jordan Combs, so he is well aware of the impacts that this will have on his budget projections.
Great, thank you.
Just, just a quick comment. So in effect, as a result of those savings, we're saving the ratepayers of the rest of the, of the city two hundred thousand dollars a year. So the subsidization, subsidy, the subsidy that the other ratepayers were providing, we, we should see some, some savings in our, on our water bills as a result of, of, of the uncovering of, of this, this, this problem.
That would be correct, Chuck. Unfortunately, because we're projecting the sale of nineteen million gallons less water next year, even with that savings, we couldn't act that proposed eight percent rate increase down to a lower amount. But if in the future, after we get over COVID-19, water sales go back to more historical levels, then yes, we'll be able to increase water rates less than what they otherwise would have had the increase.
This is Leslie. I just want to thank Jeff and Thomas and all the folks in Public Works for their good work. That's a great result.
Thank you. We, we chased a lot of wives' tales and red herrings and, and I think that, you know, it's hard to believe, because Jim asked me, he asked me several months ago, says, because we had done several shut-offs of BMI, and no, nothing ever happened to infamous Anderson Drive leak spring. And he says, is it possible, you know, that it can keep on leaking like that at that rate, or flowing at that rate with, you know, our two-hour shutdowns we were doing at the time? That was about the max we could do for a mass post-shutdown or coordinate with BMI. And I said, I didn't think so. Well, I was definitely proven wrong. We shut down, or the BMI's contractor shut down the zone I described on a Monday. It was not till Thursday of that week that the Anderson Drive spring/leak significantly dried up. So the question, the bigger question is, where does, you know, a couple hundred thousand gallons of water hide itself underground in post?
So Jeff, it's David. So just, just for my own, because I've driven up and down and ran up and down Anderson Drive, that leak, that water coming out of that side of the hill, that mountain, that has essentially been the leak that we have been looking for, for a long time. And yet, we were all looking at it all the time. We just couldn't possibly imagine that that was it. I mean, is that essentially what, what has occurred here?
That's a good question. That's an obvious question. And just looking at prior paperwork, talking to different players at Public Works and BMI, I mean, they've been chasing this infamous Anderson Drive spring/leak for ten years now, David. Our water records didn't really get out of whack until a little bit last year, or FY19, that our non-revenue start increasing, but really this fiscal year. So I don't know if I can fully say that, that it's, the water leak contributed solely to the spring that we saw there, or to the water you saw flowing. I mean, it could be a combination of the two, to be honest. I don't think that our water records, if you go back and look at a ten-year trend, I don't think we've been losing fifty-five million gallons a year for ten years.
Is this, is part of that attributable to the Houston street tower impeller question?
That's another red herring we got into last year. That will resolve itself, well, resolved itself yesterday. Actually, the meter failed last month, and we've been working with MSA to cost share in replacing not only the meter, but install a whole new meter vault. That work was completed by Public Works crews yesterday, Chuck. So we will get new readings. And unfortunately, you have two incidents occurring at the same time. So the meter's gone out just as soon as the BMI leak was found. So it'd be nice if it was, the two incidents weren't concurrent, then you can kind of look at the data separately. Now, we might never know the answer to that.
Jeff, please also relay our thanks to the folks at BMI that have helped for a long time to try to find this, this leak, you know, because I know it bothered them also. So thank you. Please, please.
Oh, absolutely. I dealt, I blew up Todd Willie's phone daily for many days. So he's been very instrumental in working with Public Works staff and coordinating all our shutdowns, coordinating our zero-usage drill, trying to look for non-metered connections. He's been very helpful.
Okay, this, Gary, I'm gonna unmute my phone or my mic to make one final point, and that is that we don't have a need for a third-quarter budget amendment this quarter. The ordinances as passed in previous quarters give the city manager the right to transfer funds within a particular fund, not from fund to fund. And obviously, with the expected reduction of expenditures during the fourth quarter, there's no need to ask council to appropriate any additional funds for any of those funds. We may have to come back at the end of the year and ask for something in the utility account, but we'll see how this reduced usage water and fixing of that leak impacts that whole fund. I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions that council might have about the financial report, but I fully understand that we only have about fifteen minutes until council meetings. So I'm not trying to cut off any questions, but I want to be mindful of your time.
Thank you, Gary. Any members of council have questions on the third-quarter financial report?
You're muted, Frank.
Thank you, Leslie. Gary, thank you. Any other questions from members of council?
No.
Hearing none, we'll jump into the general fund and significant changes.
Mr. Mayor, there really hasn't been in council significant changes since you saw this budget two weeks ago. You do know, of course, of the many significant changes we made from the original budget to get to the budget that you have before you tonight that is balanced. We cut, you know, over two million dollars worth of revenues from the general fund, and we made significant cuts in the general fund expenditures, over one-point-seven million dollars to help balance the budget. We did have carryover funds from this current fiscal year that were moving into fiscal year 21 to complete the balancing of the budget that is in front of you. I don't know if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer that, those questions. I would also say that, you know, one of the concerns that we've all felt is the recommendation on discretionary agencies in cutting their allocations. As I noted and provided to you earlier today, I did speak with all of the representatives of those agencies. Some were a bit concerned that, you know, their funding was cut. Some were very concerned. They thought they would have some difficulties. Most were very understanding, responsive, and respectful, understood that you have a very difficult decision to make as to how we carry forward and fund all of our essential activities, fund the things like projects, equipment replacement, or as a matter of fact, not fund those things in this budget, and the other, the other services that we've had to do without, like recycling and opening the pool, replacing the police chief with a permanent hire. So they were very understanding, and I presented that information to you. I would still recommend that the budget that you see before you be approved this evening, later on. And then we come back in the fall, October, November. Look at what our revenues have done. Look at what our performance is. And if we have extra revenues, you have the ability then to consider what you want to build back into the budget. That would be a wonderful picture for all of us to see. I don't know what we'll see then. Hopefully, it's not substantially worse. If it's worse, we'll then all take the actions we have to take to go into the fund balance, make further cuts, whatever seemed to be the best options available to us at that time. But unless there's any questions, or were, there really were not any changes, again, I spoke with the agencies to try and get a feel for, from them. Frankly, if I had heard overwhelmingly that we just can't live with these cuts, it would have probably been reflected in my recommendation to you. But what I heard was, frankly, they don't want to see them made. They understand, some of them indicated that these cuts are minimal in their organization, and they will be, relatively speaking, they'll be able to handle it well. And they all would like to be able to come back in the fall and see what our revenues are like, and perhaps participate in a discussion then as to, is there a possibility of any kind of funding? They understood that, you know, we can't make a decision, you can't make a decision on additional funding today because we just don't have that information.
Thank you, Jim. Members of council have any questions or observations, specifically questions?
Got a question. And I guess this might go back to the third-quarter financials, and so that's why I didn't really ask it then. You know, the, the budget right now, what we have in there is we essentially a two-and-a-half percent proposed or projected reduction in our property tax revenues. And, you know, when we look at our property tax so far in FY20, we're, we're doing well. And it's, are certainly, people paying their property tax is not something that is impacted by tourism or those folks, you know, not staying in our hotels or something. And I don't mean to minimize that. I mean, but I'm, I'm just looking at our property tax collections. And so in a way, that could be a sliver of hope for our budget, that we're, we're building in a two-and-a-half percent reduction in property tax collections. But hopefully, hopefully, that continues at a good rate, and we're not down two-and-a-half percent. Because that two-and-a-half percent is actually already, weren't we already projecting them in our originally proposed budget going down one percent from last year's accepted budget? So I'm just kind of, am I, am I right about that, Jim and Gary and Jake? That, that the property taxes could turn out to be a little bright spot for us?
I, I guess it could. We were being conservative when we looked at that figure and that reduction. That was a part of the model provided us to, provided to us by Virginia First Cities. And even though the tax itself is not directly impacted by the economic conditions, we all know that there are things that bleed through because of the economy into, into our finances, and taxes don't get paid, and bankruptcies occur, and things of that nature, which could lead to some decline. Maybe it will be positive, we can only hope.
Thanks, appreciate that.
What I would have to say about that, we ought to have pretty good indication on either June 5th or June 6th. Most years, we only meet the budget for property tax collections on June 5th. I think last year was either June 6th or 7th. Most of the money, the bulk of the money comes in between now and the tax due date. So even though the preliminary indication is positive, all it takes is a few businesses that haven't been operating not be able to come up with cash to pay their property tax. And I would hope that there's not too many folks unemployed in the city, but no doubt, there's some that probably aren't working. But they'll have the money to pay their property taxes or not, can't say with any certainty. But you'll know before you finish fiscal year how that property tax number's gonna end up.
Thank you, Gary. And certainly, we don't take a vote when we're in a work session, but is there, if anyone has any objections to supporting this budget, I hope you'll express that now.
I wouldn't do. On that note, I wanted to give Jim a thanks for reaching out to the, the agencies that we talked about in the last two work sessions. I know I was pushing that pretty hard, and, and I think it provides some, some clarity and better understanding of, of what they're dealing with and what we're dealing with, and, and how we can come out of this altogether. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Would also suggest we've given you city staff the task of worst-case scenarios and eliminating things. I hope with council's support that we can direct you to begin a process of looking at us being dreadfully wrong and things being better than anticipated, and give us a list of priorities of things to reinstate for the, the coming year. So when we do sit down in October, November and look at the first-quarter numbers, if we're in better shape than we anticipated, and there perhaps is a cure for the virus, that we can begin making some modifications to the plus side. None of us want to look at the deeper hole that could be abounding, but hope that council will embrace that idea and staff will continue to pivot their focus on what we do if we find ourselves in a, in a better state from that standpoint. Nothing else on the final budget review? I'm going to just make the observation that Jim sent out quite a bit of information about the bucket of six-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand plus dollars that are coming our way as part of the CARES Act. Gary and Jake have been working diligently to find ideas and concepts that would be appropriate use of that money per the instructions or the requirements. And to supplement that effort, I've asked David and Leslie to be a committee of two to meet with them to brainstorm and think through, and to be a nimble crew to figure out the best things to support our community, whether it be for mental health, economic development, general services, or all of the above. And just for the sake of time, I'm gonna leave it at that for the CARES Act funding, and we can revisit that perhaps later if necessary, if I missed anything, Jim. But I'd like for you to address the continuing... But I'd like for you to address the continuing city safeguards and the, the process that you have in place for maintaining essential public services with the couple of minutes that we have left.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the appointments in service of Leslie and David on this committee. We look forward to working with you. I have surveyed the leadership team of the city to ask them a number of questions. I provided that survey to you, I believe, earlier this week or late last week. And most did respond, there may have been one or two who didn't respond yet. And overwhelmingly, they thought that we were providing good service to the citizens of the community. There were no signs that anybody was greatly displeased or any significant amount of complaints coming into any of these offices. Most felt like with the staff that we had in place, the number of staff in our various offices and departments that were pretty lean. We don't want to be in a situation where we have to have three or four people in finance or the treasurer's office sick or quarantined at any one time because we couldn't get the work done. So based on what I heard from staff and what I've heard from some other managers in our Valley region, with a lack of complaints with being able to provide the services we still need and in the abundance of caution, I am recommending that we continue to keep our city facilities closed. Probably another four to six weeks and see how things evolve. You know, we will probably make opportunities for people to come in and meet with us by appointment. All the most, all the staff said they're willing to have public in our places. They just didn't want public unsupervised or too many public individuals in, in and out with the door wide open, if you will. So we'll be making appointments and people can come and see us anytime somebody stops in, they don't have an appointment, they can knock on the door or call somebody, we'll have signage out there. And then if somebody has, is able to accommodate them in their office without having somebody else there, we'll let them in the building. That is our plan. You know, an observation that as I've considered this situation, I'm not an expert on the COVID virus, but you know, everybody I hear or most people I hear say, we, we don't have a resistance to this particular virus. And if we don't have a vaccine, that leads me to believe we're all going to get the COVID virus at some point in time in the next six, 12, 15 months, whatever. So we're going to be dealing with this situation for quite some time. Consequently, we are providing supplies of masks, disinfectants, hand wash disinfectant stations for the city throughout the city, not only for our employees, but for the public who may come in from time to time. We're also looking at purchasing foggers so we can fog and disinfect the entire buildings, probably one for each facility. And, you know, we're planning, not because of panic, but because of wisdom to be prepared to deal with COVID-19 for many, many months. I wish that were not the case, but I don't see a way around it. That does not mean we will be continuing to be closed to the public for that amount of time completely. But let's walk into it slowly and make adjustments as necessary because for both the public's sakes and the employee's sake, let's look after our health and ability to sustain our business.
I was going to say to sum up and abundance of caution, the city hall will be restricted use for the foreseeable future. And we'll take it one day at a time as it comes and plan for the, the safety and soundness of not only our staff, but also our citizens.
Yes, sir.
Excellent, excellent. Anything else that needs to come before us this evening in this work session?
Just one quick question to Jim. When you have people coming in for appointments only into city hall, will they be required to wear a mask?
We have not determined that, or I should say, I have not determined that yet. I do believe that in the individual offices of the departments and individuals, they will be able to make that decision if somebody enters a treasurer's office that they want a mask on. I have not determined that in the entire building that is wise or necessary.
Okay.
Thank you, Marilyn. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I did hear from Ty, fire chief. And yes, one of our ambulances was sideswiped by a semi truck on I-81. The personnel were okay, they were able to extricate themselves, they went down a pretty deep ravine. But they extricated themselves and they were able to make their way back up. They're going to the hospital or we're going to the hospital to be checked. The driver of the semi was being extricated, seemingly not seriously injured if at all. And that's all Ty was able to communicate to me at the time.
Thank you, Jim. Hopeful that everyone gets home safely this evening and in one piece, including the truck driver and our first responders. Never know what, what they're going to face, to be sure. Appreciate that update. We're, we're bumping up on the eight o'clock hour and the start of our next meeting. And I feel compelled to take a brief break and perhaps start at 8:05. As we conclude, I just want to thank Washington Lee for coming and making their presentation. The great work of Jeff Martone and his team working with VMI and finding the eternal spring at VMI. And to staff for the great work and support as we navigate this budget. So with that, I would like to conclude our work session. And we will break until 8:05 and we'll start at 8:05. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it's the appointed hour, 8:05 with our slight delay this evening. Thank you all for joining the Thursday, May 21st edition of the Lexington City Council. I'll remind folks to speak loud and proud as we navigate this for folks that may listen to a recording later. But like to call the meeting to order and first time of business, if you will, join me in standing in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, especially in light of what we heard our first responders going through. And as we rapidly approach the Memorial Day weekend, seems more significant than others to pause and think about those that protect us and keep us safe. Next item is consideration of the agenda. Anybody have any adjustments or observations? Hearing none will approve the agenda as presented and we'll move next into proclamations. We have four proclamations and I will offer the first. It's a little bit delayed, but someone's good public service is worth recognizing and honoring. And this proclamation was scheduled to be delivered in February for Sheriff Blaylock's retirement. But a proclamation honor for the Honorable Christopher J. Blaylock, Sheriff of the County of Rockbridge and the City of Lexington on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas the Honorable Christopher J. Blaylock has retired from his position as sheriff of the County of Rockbridge and the City of Lexington on December 31st, 2019. And whereas Sheriff Blaylock was born in South Carolina, raised in Rockbridge County and chose his career in law enforcement in 1986 as a jailer with the Rockbridge County Sheriff's Office instead of running from the law. And whereas Sheriff Blaylock has held many positions of responsibility, including patrol duty, bailiff, investigator, chief deputy, and most recently sheriff. And whereas Sheriff Sylvie Reynolds was known to declare that the best decision he ever made as sheriff was to hire Chris Blaylock. And whereas Sheriff Blaylock during his service provided significant input on many vital decisions and was involved in many important and lasting initiatives, including, but not limited to, the total consolidation of emergency services dispatching, the construction of the Rockbridge Regional Public Safety Communication Center and the Rockbridge County Fire Rescue and Emergency Management, Management Emergency Operations Center, the Regional Emergency Services Radio Project and the Crisis Intervention Assessment Site. And whereas Sheriff Blaylock's legacy may be best known for his decisions to hire Rob Tackett, Ryan McCullough, Stanley Tomlin, Sean Capps, just to name a few. And whereas Sheriff Blaylock has served on many boards, committees, commissions and authorities, including the Rockbridge Regional Jail Authority, Project Horizon Board of Directors, the Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program and the Virginia Sheriff's Association Board of Directors and the Rockbridge Community Services Board of Directors. And whereas Sheriff Blaylock has earned the respect and support of the staff, the Board of Supervisors, the Lexington City Council and the citizens of our community by demonstrating an unwavering commitment to the people he served. And whereas Sheriff Blaylock is a true professional and dedicated leader in Rockbridge County, the City of Lexington and throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas Sheriff Blaylock has been fair and impartial and just in all his actions as a law enforcement professional and as a member of our community. And whereas Sheriff Blaylock has dutifully and faithfully served the citizens of our community for 33 years. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Frank Friedman, mayor of the great city of Lexington, with the support of the Lexington City Council and by virtue of the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia, do hereby proclaim February 15th, 2020 as Sheriff Christopher J. Blaylock Day. I invite all friends and family assembled here to celebrate and to pause to recognize his achievement of service to our community. Also, I offer sincere congratulations and best wishes for a happy, healthy, long and productive retirement. The 15th day of February. And I hope that Sheriff Blaylock is enjoying his retirement and hasn't completely gone to the birds, as I think he was getting into chicken farming. Next, I'd like to call on Dennis to provide the proclamation for local law enforcement officers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation expressing the appreciation of the mayor and city council of Lexington, Virginia to local law enforcement officers and support staff. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agencies serving the City of Lexington, County of Rockbridge, the Town of Glasgow and the City of Buena Vista provide a vital public service by safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens in the Rockbridge area. And whereas safety of our citizens is a primary goal of local, state and national government. And whereas law enforcement is one of the few chosen professions that require the willingness to at any moment put themselves in harm's way to protect others. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice dying in the line of duty. And whereas the Lexington Police Department, Rockbridge County Sheriff's Department, Buena Vista Police Department, Buena Vista Sheriff's Department, Glasgow Police Department, Rockbridge Regional Jail and Virginia Military Institute Police are comprised of the finest officers, supervisors, administrative and support staff that can be found within the profession. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city Lexington City Council, call upon all citizens of Lexington, Virginia to observe the week of May 10th through the 16th, 2020 as Police Week during which all of our citizens may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And we urge all citizens to take the time to thank those in law enforcement for the important service they provide to all of us. We further call upon all citizens of the City of Lexington to observe May 10th through May 16th, 2020 as Peace Officers Week in honor, in honor of those law enforcement officers who their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes adopted this 21st day of May, 2020.
Thank you, Dennis. And interim chief Riley sent some words that he wanted me to share in response to that being thanks to our distinguished mayor, city council and city manager for this proclamation. I'd like to honor and congratulate all law enforcement officers, especially the members of Lexington Police Department and our local law enforcement agencies. The women and men of the Lexington Police Department are certainly a special group of caring individuals. Lexington is fortunate to have such a brave, compassionate and dedicated staff serving this great community. Also, we should all never forget those that paid the ultimate sacrifice, giving their lives in the service of others in the line of duty. Even in these uncharted times of the COVID pandemic, all of our first responders continue to serve honorably with no hesitation. We should all be grateful for their service to keep us safe. Respectfully submitted interim chief Mark Riley. And again, fantastic work by lots of good people. The next proclamation for fire department and EMS, like, ask David Ziegler to deliver for us.
Thank you for the opportunity to read this one. It's a proclamation expressing the appreciation of the mayor and city council of Lexington, Virginia to the City of Lexington Fire Department and local emergency medical service agencies and providers. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 17th to May 23rd as National Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas the men and women of the City of Lexington Fire And whereas the men and women of the City of Lexington Fire Department and all EMS agencies serving the City of Lexington, Rockbridge County and the City of Buena Vista provide a vital public service by responding to the EMS needs of our residents and visitors. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their local EMS providers. And whereas the safety of our citizens is a primary goal of local, state and national government. And whereas EMS providers are often among the first to arrive upon the scene of emergencies and disasters, be they medical, natural or manmade, to provide immediate and often life-saving assistance while fulfilling their mission to provide the best pre-hospital care. And whereas EMS providers participate in numerous hours of rigorous training and continuing education in order to enhance their life-saving skills and thereby dramatically improve the survival and recovery rate of their patients. And whereas EMS providers and agencies demonstrate a high level of commitment and dedication to their communities and fellow citizens by providing training, health screenings and other life safety awareness programs in their respective localities. Now therefore, we, the mayor and Lexington City Council, call upon all citizens of Lexington to observe the week of May 17th to May 23rd, 2020 as Emergency Medical Services Week during which all our residents may join in celebrating the dedication of our local EMS providers, past and present, and their families who support, whose support allows them to serve our community, adopted this day, 21st day of May, 2020.
Thank you, David. And I think the report from Jim may have been during our work session, but for those dialing in, the EMS responded to an accident on the interstate and the ambulance was hit by a tractor trailer. And thankfully, everybody appears to be okay by getting checked out as a precaution. So no, no telling what you're going to face when you do respond to a call. And I think was also reported, there were I think three traffic accidents along with a house fire. The house fire was, I understand, was on the corner of Houston and Spotswood. And I think nobody was injured there and thankful for that, but heart goes out to the family recovering from that. Last proclamation is the National Public Works and I've asked Leslie to deliver that.
Proclamation recognizing May 17th through 23rd, 2020 as National Public Works Week in Lexington, Virginia. Whereas public work services provided in the city are an essential part of our citizens, businesses and institutions' everyday lives, well-being and safety. And whereas public support of the importance of providing services and maintaining infrastructure collectively known as public works improves morale and performance of public works employees. And whereas public work staff provide long-term capital project planning for renewal of city infrastructure and facilities. And whereas public work staff also provide critical response capabilities, experience and support in times of natural disaster and emergency. And whereas the health, safety, economic growth and quality of life in our city greatly depend on these vital public work services. And whereas the morale and productivity of a qualified and dedicated people whose staff public works is positively influenced by the citizen's attitude and understanding of the important services that department provides. Now therefore, we, the city council and mayor of the City of Lexington do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through 23rd, 2020 is National Public Works Week in our City of Lexington, Virginia, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens, adopted this 21st day of May, 2020.
Thank you, Leslie, and I think Jeff is still on the call. Hope that you'll take back to your team appreciation of all of city council and myself for the great work that they do and the tireless effort that you all put in when we have unscheduled events of snowstorms or flooding or whatever may prevail. Great grateful for the good work. I'm not aware of any presentations this evening and would move straight into public hearings and I think call on Arnie.
Good evening to you all. We have two public hearings that are related. The first is a PUD or Plan Unit Development for Weatherburn. It's an amendment to the current PUD. And we also have a preliminary subdivision. Mr. Mayor, if you would like, we could open up both items and hold the presentation and public comment portion for both of those together if you like.
I will take that recommendation and do just that. You want to present and then open the public hearing?
Sure. If I could direct your attention, Janey, if you could take us to page 11 of 97. The request is really to amend a handful number of lots in the subdivision for Weatherburn. Go down just a couple of pages to the diagram. One more right there. Just to sort of go around the circle from left to right, the request is to amend the lots number 11 and 12 on the right hand side to shorten those two lots by a little bit. And that gray area would be additional open space. As we come around to the back part of the circle or the loop, lots number 17 and 18 would be lengthened all the way to the property line by eating up a little bit of open space that is shaded in gray. The primary reason for that is Max has a client or maybe even two that would like an addition onto the rear of the footprint. And that does not fit on to the buildable area of that particular lot. So they need some extension of those lots. And as we move around to the right-hand portion of the loop, you see a little gray wedge that is open space currently. That wedge would be primarily given over to lot number 22. And when we count up the open space that is either added or taken away, it's a no net loss. So the open space doesn't increase or decrease and we are well or slightly above the 30% open space that is required for all planned unit developments. The other change is to the remainder of the lots along the right-hand side, which are lots number 23 through 26. Those are slightly different in size and Max would like to make them more uniform in size so that they're easier for him to put his product on to those particular lots. And you see slight adjustments in the property boundaries for lots number 23 through 26. The reason that you're being requested to review and vote on or make a decision on a preliminary subdivision and a planned unit development is because the planned unit development is tied to a concept plan. So if the open space changes or the lot sizes or the lot boundaries change, then they have to make an amendment to the existing planned unit development and also to the preliminary subdivision. I did notice, or should mention that we did have comments from the homeowners association. That is included on page 25 of your packet. The homeowners association is in favor. They met, voted and they are in favor of the proposed changes. And Mr. Steve McAllister is also a neighbor and he provided comments that had to do with some buffering that he would prefer, but is largely in favor of the proposed amendments. Before I get too far along, that there is a mistake on page 30, which is the preliminary subdivision portion of the staff report. And there it shows a diagram or a plaque showing re-subdivision of Weatherburn dated February 11th. That is the incorrect date. The other one that we just referenced is has a date of February 26th. The February 11th one is the earlier version and is the incorrect version. So it does not include as an example lots number 11 and 12 that were shortened up to sort of balance out the open space. So if we get to the option that where we make a motion on the preliminary subdivision, if the person making that motion would please indicate that it is a plaque showing re-subdivision with a February 26th date and not a February 11th date. Okay, answering questions.
Members of council have any questions? Hearing none, I would like to open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this matter, unmute yourself and/or alert the administrator. And as I recall, other than these letters that were with the planning commission, there was no other communication. Is that correct, Janey?
Correct, and I'm monitoring the Facebook and there are no comments on the Facebook feed about it either.
Thank you, ma'am. Hearing no one wishing to speak, I will close the public hearing and ask for council's consideration. Let's take them one at a time, even though the public hearing was for both. Let's do 6.1 first.
I move to approve an amendment to the Weatherburn Planned Unit Development Application, PUD 2020-01 as presented by the applicant and with the applicant proffered condition.
Michelle, I'll take you for the second. And Arnie, this is not the one that you need to reference on the date, correct?
That's correct.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
In the sense?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Ask for consideration of 6.2.
I move to approve preliminary subdivision application, PS 2020-04 for the re-subdivision of Weatherburn in accordance with the plaque showing re-subdivision of Weatherburn completed by Perkins and Orson dated February 26th, 2020 as submitted.
Chuck on the second. Have a motion, second and discussion. Hearing none, a roll call vote. Mr. Smith? Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
In the sense?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Next item, 6.3, public hearing request from June Patterson. Arnie, would you like to present that, please?
Sure. Ms. Patterson is owner of 112 Smith Street and also I believe a family member owns Non-Hook Lane. And you see on the location map there that the Non-Hook Lane property in particular has an odd shape, has a boomerang shape. There's a good bit of elevation change from Smith Street down to Hook Lane. Both of these properties are currently for sale. They were sold as is. The person that purchased Non-Hook Lane would have to take care of a lot of property uphill from them, which wouldn't be terribly convenient. Their request is, Janey, if you don't mind going to the next page to amend that property boundary as shown on the boundary line adjustment survey you see there, so that most of the property around 112 Smith Street would all face Smith Street and just even up those two property lines to be a little bit more traditional. We did not have any comments from folks in the public in response to the ad in the paper, posting of the property or adjacent property owner notices.
Good, thank you. Members of council have any questions? Hearing none would ask, or I'm sorry, would open the public hearing, if there's anyone that would like to speak to this matter. And Janey, again, I'll call on you or you see anything on Facebook and affirm that we did not receive any contact prior to the meeting.
I have no Facebook comments and no prior comments to the meeting.
Great, thank you very much. Perceiving no one wishing to address this topic, I will close the public hearing and ask for council's consideration.
I move to approve preliminary subdivision application, PS 2020-05 for the adjustment of boundary lines between 112 Smith Street, tax map number 18-5-C and 19 Hook Lane, tax map number 18-5-B in accordance with the boundary line adjustment survey for June P. Patterson and Nina Jean Page Beach completed by Troutland Surveying as submitted by the applicant.
Have a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck, for the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none would ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
In the sense?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Looks like June is with us dialed in here. Thank you for joining us and good luck with the, the changes that have been approved. Appreciate you being with us this evening. Next item is 6.4. Arnie, if you'd like to present that.
Sure. This is a preliminary subdivision, 2020-06 for lot line vacation plat for VMI properties. As you see on the location map there, there are 54 properties that are currently owned by VMI and they are largely underneath the existing core physical training facility and in the location where the aquatic center is proposed. The Attorney General apparently made a recommendation to VMI that those be combined in order to facilitate the issuance of title insurance policy. The larger parcel would meet zoning requirements because there's no zoning for VMI being a state-owned property. We did not have any comments from the public in response to the ad in the paper, the posting of the property or the adjacent property owner notices. We had inquiries as to what was going on, but no comment about the actual combination of the lots.
Thank you, Arnie. Any questions for members of council?
Mr. Mayor, since I am employed by the applicant, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Thank you, sir.
Arnie, I don't know if you want to answer or if the applicant does, but there is one parcel that's not included because it's done by Columbia Gas. Is that right?
Correct. If you look on, Janey, if you could get us onto page 53. It's gonna be hard to tell at this scale, but on the left-hand side, you see a small square there that the applicant noted is owned by the gas company. So currently, they do not want to combine that, but there's a possibility of that happening in the future.
Very good. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
There's no motion yet. We haven't, have we done the public hearing?
Sorry, jumped ahead, got distracted. Thank you, Leslie. I'm hearing no more questions would open the public hearing. And again, Janey, if you can affirm, we've had no one contacted us prior. And is there any commotion on Facebook regarding this topic?
No Facebook comments and no prior communications.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Now, welcome consideration.
I move to approve preliminary subdivision application, PS 2020-06 for the vacation of 54 lot lines for the VMI properties generally located between Massey Street, North Main Street, Diamond Street and the rear yards of the properties along the west side of North Randolph Street in accordance with the lot line vacation plat dated March 10th, 2020, completed by Draper Aiden Associates as submitted by the applicant.
Second. Have a motion. Dennis, I'm gonna give the call to you on that one for the second. Thank you. And I'll, any further discussion? Hearing none would ask for roll call vote. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ziegler?
He recused himself.
I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Smith? Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
In the sense?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. You have minutes from May 5th, 2020 and May 7th, 2020. Those were in your packet prior. Anybody have any objection to proving them as presented? Hearing none, we will accept those as presented. Next is citizens' remarks and comments. And we did have one communication prior to that I'm aware of, an email, and I've asked Chuck to read that into the record, a communication from Chris Howison. prior to that I'm aware of, an email, and I've asked Chuck to read that into the record, a communication from Chris Howison.
From Chris Howison dated May 16, 2020. "To members of city council and city manager, I read in the May 13, 2020 issue of the News Gazette that the quote 'recycling program may be scrapped,' unquote, parentheses their word. As a taxpayer and property owner, I am very disappointed to hear this news. The recycling efforts of the city have had a positive effect on keeping much of the trash generated out of the public landfill. The existing Lexington recycling program is environmentally responsible and should be continued. Catherine House and David House and 615 Stonewall Street, Lexington, Virginia."
Thank you, Chuck, and thank you to the Howisons for sharing that with us. Janie, are there any other comments or communications that you're aware of?
Nothing, aside from a couple people on Facebook thanking you all for your hard work and dedication during this challenging time.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, thank you. Hearing no other citizens wishing to speak this evening, move on to the consent agenda. The items there for approval of the third quarter financial report.
I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion as second, needs no discussion as consent, and as for roll call vote, Mr. Smith? Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye, could you call my name, I didn't hear it.
Alexander?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you all very much for, especially to Gary and team for putting those numbers together and presenting them in our work session. I'm not aware of any unfinished business that anyone would like to address. Move straight into boards and commissions and call on Mr. Smith for the Blue Ridge Resource Authority.
Blue Ridge Resource Authority met Monday virtually, and three items of note. We had a public hearing to consider resolution to adopt fiscal year 2021 tipping fee schedule, which the, the board did adopt. We adopt the resolution to adopt our fiscal year 2021 budget, and you may, let me get to the right page. Yeah, because of the contractor delay on the old cell, getting that, that capped, we did receive a notice of violation from DEQ to that effect, and have been given a deadline to complete that project by December 2020, which we should have no problem meeting, in fact, I think it's, it's scheduled to close by October at the latest. So we do have a little bit of cushion before that December date rolls around, and that's my report, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Members of council have any questions? Main Street Lexington.
We met on Tuesday, the 12th, and the hashtag Love Lex Live concert raised $6,700 for the Community Foundation of Rockbridge Bath and Algeany Relief Fund. The Community Foundation awarded Main Street $11,000 from the relief fund, and Main Street has distributed $9,600 to 15 businesses in the first week in May, which was an average of amount of about $500. They were giving it out as grants, they'll have a second rollout of the relief funding this week, I guess last week. Main Street requested an additional $4,000 plus the, and then they have the 100, sorry, $1,400 from the first disbursement that they will continue to hand out to businesses. Main Street also received a generous donation of $22,500 in donations earmarked for recovery efforts in Lexington. And then they also received 2,250 in general donations, and they'll use those donations, particularly the $22,000 specifically earmarked for recovery, to augment the Lift-Lex program, which I'll tell you about in a second, and to possibly give more grants to businesses, they're still in the planning phase on, on how they can best use that money. And if you haven't heard about the Lift-Lex gift card program, it's a new program with all the downtown businesses participating, it's a special new gift card program they've set up to help merchants and their employees during these unusual times. You can purchase five $15 gift cards, and the price is $65 for $75 value. You can choose to pay the full $75 as well, or even add a tip, and all the extra money goes directly to employee relief funds. All the details are on the Main Street website, and you can order the gift cards from them, and they will mail them or deliver them to you, but it's a way of getting money directly to our businesses. Their goal is to sell 1,000 Lift-Lex packets, and that'll put $70,000 directly back into our downtown. Main Street did receive PPP Payroll Protection Program funding. Many businesses downtown reopened on Friday with precautions. So in general, they had soft openings, so not too much advertising yet, but most of the businesses downtown are open, so go down or give them a call, whatever you feel most safe doing, but they are taking special precautions so that you're safe and they are safe as well. The Design Committee is still working on downtown beautification, and the Economic Vitality Committee is evaluating possibilities of more virtual events rather than in-person events, and also how to, how they can facilitate virtual retail and help the businesses downtown excel at that. And that is all I have.
Leslie, just to confirm, the Lift-Lex, do I remember correctly, did I hear correctly, there was a grant that Main Street Lexington received to help fund that?
Yes, exactly.
And the different gift certificates, there's no limit on those, so they can make great Mother's Day gifts, Father's Day gifts. You can use them into the future, there's not a, a timing piece on that, is there, or is there a?
No, they're just hoping to have them all purchased by Labor Day, but no, you can use them, redeem them whenever you want. And there is an employee fund, that's a piece of it. Most of it helps the businesses, but then there is a specific pot that will help employees as well.
Very good, so tell your, tell your friends out of the community, you know, if you're gonna go to, do carry out, to do it through this program was helpful as well, so.
And great graduation gifts.
Good call, Father's Day is just around the corner.
That's right.
Questions for Leslie? Thank you. Planning Commission?
We met last Thursday, and we reviewed a comprehensive plan amendment from the George Marshall Museum. They, they are located on VMI, but they are not part of VMI, so they are having to rezone because they're currently in the institutional zone. So we had that and a rezoning of the museum, and those two items, actually, there's, those two items will come before council at our next meeting. And then we reviewed the first half of our comprehensive plan, and that went really well. And then we planned on our comprehensive plan community rollout, and we've decided on a date, say Tuesday, June 16 at 5 o'clock. We're still working on the format, and it all depends on what is going on in the current environment, but we're, we will definitely have an online component, most likely using Zoom, and we'll ask the participants to pre-register so that they get an invitation, just like with these meetings, so nobody can Zoom-bomb you. And we'll have a moderator to field questions, we'll live stream it and we'll record it so people can watch it later. We'll have about a 30-minute presentation with question and answer after that, and an exit survey to get feedback from everybody who listened in as well. So join us on Tuesday, June 16 at 5 o'clock for our comprehensive plan rollout.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions for Leslie? Just pile on by saying, I know the, the process has been a little bit difficult, and there were some concerns about the, the product being delivered, but my understanding from a couple of members of the Planning Commission, very pleased with the final product delivered by the Berkeley Group and the work that they put in to write this comprehensive plan, so.
Yeah, I agree, I think everybody was very, very pleased with it. For us, it, the whole thing was a process, first we had to figure out, as a planning commission, a format and what, what exactly our goals were there, so it was a good experience. It took a bit of time, but I think we found our groove and the end product shows it, so.
Excellent. Well, thank you for not rushing it, and as David Ziegler frequently says, let's take all the time to get it right, and it sounds like it's a good product and look forward to it coming forward through the remainder of the process as we consider it in, in the near future. So thank you very much. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers?
Yeah, Tourism Board postponed our meeting this month, so we'll meet again on June 17. But I do have a couple updates I'd like to share. First off, Regional Tourism has partnered with Blue Ridge Country Magazine to, for an online contest to win a future two-night getaway to beautiful Lexington, Virginia, and this was actually a marketing campaign that was set up before COVID-19. But the, the Travel Magazine is promoting it through their social media, linking back to the entry form on their website, blueridgecountry.com, and included in the package is a, is a two-night stay at Robert E. Lee, Natural Bridge State Park admission, downtown carriage lines, rides, dinner at Southern Inn, and more. And the deadline for the winner to actually take the trip has been extended into 2021 because of COVID-19. Regional Tourism is following up by email with everyone who enters this contest to provide more information about visiting Lexington, an invitation to request our print inspiration guide and a link to join Tourism's newsletter. The deadline for entries runs through July 12, 2020, but so far, they've received 3,500 entries. Tourism continues with limited soft marketing efforts to encourage prospective travelers to keep Lexington BV and Rockbridge in mind as a future travel destination, particularly for outdoor activities, for which there seems to be a lot of pent-up interest. And just a few partner updates. Natural Bridge State Park's admission revenue from May 1 through May 12 exceeded those for the same time period in 2019 by $1,500. Retail sales have been moved down to the Cedar Creek Cafe and are strong, and work on Children's Discovery Area and Track Trail have continued to pace. Hall's Drive-In opened Friday, May 15, and sold out both opening nights, accepting 50% capacity of cars. This weekend's double feature is the Invisible Man and Trolls World Tour, so something for everyone. Virginia Horse Center kicks off their season with the Bonnie Blue Saddlebred Horse Show Wednesday, June 17 through Saturday, June 20. Unfortunately, in accordance with the United States Equestrian Federation, spectators and vendors are not permitted. Finally, Rockbridge Vineyard's outdoor area has been a popular destination, and they are now managing social distancing restrictions by taking reservations for their lawn space. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis? It's such a troubling time when there's so many neat things, and such a beautiful time of year, mother nature's not cooperating right now with the rain and cool temperatures, but sure, hope we can find a cure and get people outdoors and back in the streets, so to speak. Thank you for that report, Dennis. Department of Social Services, Miss Hens?
Yes, hi, we met yesterday, or excuse me, this past Wednesday by teleconference, we had a real full agenda, so I have a fairly long report. Donna Clark, the director, presented the local Department of Social Services Compensation Plan for the 2020, 2021 year. This is their budget year, starts July 1st, excuse me, June 1st. This comp plan includes quite a number of new items as a result of discussions, surveys, and meetings between local agencies and the state agency. The comp plan addresses long overdue improvements to pay grades and salaries, and it also lifts unnecessary restrictions that were not favorable to a local agency's past efforts to recruit and retain employees. Before the COVID-19 pandemic, the plan had state support for a 2% bonus and a 1.5% salary increase for local employees. Unfortunately, this has been tabled due to the COVID-19 budget constraints. The base budget from the state will, will remain the same at 1.7 million, so at least it's not cut. The local agency, however, has budgeted a 2% salary increase in the 2021 budget. This 2% increase will help offset a health insurance deduction of $70 per paycheck per employee. The agency recently went on the county's health plan, it used to be separate from the county. And so with this change, now the DSS employees are paying some cost to their premium. We also reviewed the financial report for April, that's 11 months into the fiscal year, and it looks in line or under budget in most areas, and Donna expects the fiscal year will end just above, or excuse me, just under budget, mainly due to some unfilled positions during the year. We also reviewed March and April workload reports. No real significant change, except of course, as expected, SNAP, the food stamps saw an increase between March, from March to April, and that's obviously due to the COVID-19. And DSS actually expected more applications for SNAP benefits, but many were not eligible due to unemployment and that extra federal supplement. And then finally, we took quite a bit of time, we reviewed and discussed the Baskerville survey results, and they also sent us the preliminary schedule and the facility matrix showing the square footage for the different spaces and uses. The estimated square footage in this matrix was 10,122 square feet, and that's similar to previous estimated space needs. I think Magnolia Square was slightly above that. We plan to review and approve the request for proposals and requests for qualifications at our June 17 board meeting. The RFP will be extended to interested landlords for new office leasing options, and the RFQ will be extended to interested general contractors to demonstrate similar experience reduced in a reduced list of GC for future bidding. This was recommended by Baskerville because there's just so many, you know, people say, I want to build a building for you, so this will, you know, narrow it down to qualified general contractors. The R, let's see. The invitation for the RFQ and RFP bid process will be in July, and we expect that'll take a month. And the timeline estimates construction to be complete, completed by March 2022. And Donna Clark in her director's report wanted to let the board know how pleased, and she's very proud of her staff during this difficult time, we, we received no concerns from the community, and the services continue to be provided through, through this difficult time. And the office, she plans the office to open, office will open up on a limited basis in July. And finally, the board voted to take one child into care, and that's my report, and if you have any questions?
Hearing none, thank you, Michelle, and good work with the long process and working through Baskerville and ascertaining exactly what Department of Social Services needs for the future. It's great, great stuff.
Thank you.
Raro, Mr. Ziegler?
Just a couple of things. Even though our spring sports have not been occurring, we're still looking at the possibility of safely and legally conducting our summer clinics that include, it's a tennis clinic and a golf clinic, so that would be something potentially on our, on our schedule. Also, just personally, say a couple, couple words, John Trudgen, in his retirement, he served almost six years as executive director, and during his tenure, just a couple of his accomplishments that he helped oversee, it's always a team effort, but he helped oversee bringing Buena Vista into our organization, which was really, really big, and I think that the community is better for it. He also helped lead the fundraising charge and then the construction of Brewbaker Annex, which is a field that, of course, the city owned for a long time and was not using, and now it's, it's in our, in our. that of course the city owned for a long time and was not using, and now it's, it's in our, in our repertoire of fields for kids to use. And so those are a couple of big projects, big, big accomplishments that, that John Trudgen helped oversee. And so I personally wish him very well on his retirement. Now that he is retiring, we have taken action to offer Daryl Plager the role of interim executive director, and he has accepted. And so we're very fortunate that Daryl is willing to do that, and he's got many years of experience, and now he takes the reins right now. So that's my report. If anyone has any questions, thank you.
Members of council, have any questions? Thank you, David. On behalf of all of council, I hope you'll express our gratitude for Rocky's service in the past and for Daryl's coming for the future. Good, good gentleman who done a good job. Appreciate their, their input and their expertise. Threshold, Ms. Alexander?
Yes, Threshold met virtually on Tuesday of this week. We did not have a quorum, but we did have good lively discussion and updates. The planning department staff and Arnie Glazer, they have been communicating with our new applicants who submitted requests for rehab services. And we discussed the updates on two previous households who had received services recently. One homeowner supplied their own materials for Mission Next Door to install a roof that was in desperate need of replacing. Mission Next Door will return to replace some sheet rock that had been damaged by the roof leaking. And Tap is also involved with that household to assist with repairs that are related to his utilities. The exorbitant cost of his utilities and the need for renovation, I believe. Another household received assistance from Mission Next Door to repair guttering, and they are going to be coming back to do some railing repair work. We owe a lot of gratitude to Mission Next Door for their dedication and excellent help to make this neighborhood project a success. Once the COVID cloud has lifted, we foresee them being able to do some additional work. Now, there's another household that was brought to our attention in need of emergency assistance to repair sewer line. And there had to be many parties to get involved in this in order to receive funding and the manpower assistance needed and to make headway with a project like this. We are keeping our toes crossed, our eyes and fingers and everything to make sure that we can get all the barriers removed that we have right now in order to resolve this situation so that the Health Department will not have to take further action. We have incorporated Habitat Rehab, Rapid Rehab, the Southeast Rural Community Assistance Project out of Roanoke, and it's called CERCAP. There is a plumber who's waiting in the wings to do the work, and then Public Works has had to get involved to do some lateral work from the street to the property. And they have extended family who are helping this elderly citizen to get all the paperwork together. So there's a great deal of work going on behind the scenes, and my hat really goes off to Arnie Glazer because he's been persistent and helping with the needs of those households. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Any questions? Maryland, Mission Next Door, where is it located? Is it here locally?
Here locally, Lexington, Rockbridge County, Buena Vista. People who just volunteer their services, who have skills in carpentry and those kinds of things, and they just volunteer their time to get work done.
Terrific. Thank you very much, and thanks for the, the good work that they're doing for our neighbors.
Absolutely.
For my report, just a couple of brief items. Number one, mayors and chairs met yesterday, and we focused our discussion and conversation and collaboration on the CARES money that has come about. And we talked about, I think earlier, certainly in the work session and a little bit in this meeting. City of Lexington's received, we signed the documentation and expect to receive a little over $649,000 to be used for COVID-related expenses. And I'm appreciative to Leslie and David for being willing to work as a committee of two with staff to figure out the best way to allocate those funds to support our community and make good use of those. So thank you in advance, Leslie and David, for your work to oversee that project with staff. We also collectively, mayors and chairs, talked about plans and requirements for reopening. And I think that each locality will probably be pretty unique in what they do, but we'll try and sync up the, the timing of it. It's just amazing the details to think about. And for instance, the, Rockbridge County was talking about the number of people that they have that come in person typically to pay their taxes, for instance, on June 5. And they felt a need to be able to open up to get, to handle that, where obviously we've discussed tonight that we're going to delay and for the foreseeable future, not open hours except by appointment. So. But working in collaboration and looking for best practices, keeping always in mind the safety and soundness of our citizens as the number one goal from that standpoint. Many of you may be familiar with Robert Forsman, who Saturday, two weeks ago, I think it was, or was it just this past Saturday? Fell unconscious in his yard while doing yard work. There were two deputies that responded in a very timely manner and administered CPR. He was delivered to the hospital and put on a flight and went down to Roanoke and was treated, and I understand had surgery, I think today, and may very well be coming home tomorrow. You might think that that's the end of the story, but Robert was previously the fire chief of the Lexington Fire Department many, many moons ago. And the firemen that responded to the call and some others went out and actually cleaned up and finished the work that was, Robert was working on. So when he gets home, he now have a puddle, but it'll be a clean puddle and the, the yard work done. So the Brotherhood of Firemen is very strong, and I just wanted to remind all of council and city staff at how dedicated and committed and what a fine fabric we have of community with our police department and the extra steps that they took to take care of one of their own. And with that, I'd like to call on city manager, Jim, for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. As you are all aware, the Piovano Building has two tenants in that building. The Rara and Community Table. The lease for that facility and those two entities expired in April. They would both like to have that lease renewed. I do intend to bring that to you in the June 4 meeting. The Rara organization does not need any changes in their lease. The Community Table would like to, however, consider an outdoor space where they could serve meals. So I will be working with staff to take a look at that and see if that can be accommodated. And if there aren't any real significant issues, again, both of those leases will be for you on June 4 for renewal. Frankly, we don't have any need for that building at this time. In this current economic condition, both of those entities could still use space to occupy and provide service to the community. There aren't too many good options for either of them at this time. So the former VDOT site, we all know, is an ongoing work in progress. Commonwealth Environmental Association is starting phase two of the environmental inspection on that site. I say starting, they've either started this week or soon will. And last I spoke with the developer of that site, potential developers, they are still very interested in it. And we do hope now with the positive information that we will receive from the environmental survey tests that we can look at getting some developers on board or selecting developers yet this summer. Of course, we do have to wait and see what those tests show, but hopefully they're positive. Our spring streets paving schedule is still on, on schedule. Obviously, because we did have to take money out of the budget this year, we will only be doing VDOT inventory streets. paveCon was the apparent low bidder, and Jeff Martone will be working with them to put together a schedule of streets to be paved. And as soon as that schedule is set, we will announce that to council and the public, of course. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we did have a small house fire on Houston Street this evening. Fire was in a bedroom. It was caught very quickly. Nobody was injured. Fires believed to be accidental, still being investigated, and the family is now being housed in a local hotel. The Department Environmental Quality shared with us their review of the environmental impact statement for the BMI Aquatic Center. BMI had to file a last statement. The EQ looked at that statement and indicated that they did not feel there were any impacts that could not be dealt with or that would create difficulties. So they did give it their stamp of approval, and that's just one step, of course, in the process for BMI to get that aquatic center approved, new facility on their campus. COVID-19, we're all busy with that. We know there are numerous ways that impacts our community. I've been busy with a number of meetings and phone calls and staff conversations regarding what we are doing to respond. And as you are aware, the financial implications of the COVID-19 have shown up in our current fiscal year budget and the fiscal year 21 budget, and they are significant. Leadership team and I have been working diligently to continue to provide 100% of city services and to consider means of expanding access to city facilities and services as restrictions are decreased and probable risks hopefully do diminish. At this time, we have not made any decisions that I've mentioned earlier and as the mayor shared, but we will likely not open this, the community or the facilities up to the community. We will likely just do the appointment, work by appointment, and have the public serve the public in that fashion. One of the things we are doing, of course, is we have a safety committee here. Robbie, our HR director, Robbie Bailey, is working with that committee to make sure that we review our facilities and consider, as again, the mayor said, we have CARES funds that we can use to respond to COVID-19, including making changes to our facilities to respond to it. So we are looking at things, the safety committee are looking at changes like touchless doors, key fobs to open the doors instead of keys, touchless bathroom fixtures, kitchen fixtures, et cetera. And with the assistance of council member Ziegler and council member Strong, those will be some of the items we'll want to ask about, looking at for the possibly those CARES funds. As we do see signs of business reopening in the community, staff will be working with the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Lexington, and businesses to try and support businesses in the community as they reopen. That'll require some time and investment of energy and imagination, creativity, to try and make sure that we provide the best environment for our businesses, and each business is somewhat unique. So we'll be working with them as well in the months to come, weeks and months. Tomorrow, or not tomorrow, next week, there is a community testing event scheduled for Lexington. That's Friday, May 29 from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Anyone who wants to have a test for COVID-19 can be tested. And they will be at the Maury River Middle School, and it's sponsored by the Virginia Department of Health. Again, you do not have to have symptoms. If you want to be tested, you can go over and get tested between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00. That will also be on our website as well. The Rockbridge County Library, Raro, and City of Lexington Youth Services are discussing a collaboration this summer to consider some joint and virtual summer, summer season of fun activities for the young people in our community. You know, we all know that those three agencies typically provide summer programs for our young people. And those programs are a hands-on program, in-person program, camps and that type of thing, but those things probably will not occur this summer. Therefore, the agencies are talking and relating as to how they might be able to do something jointly that would be significant enough to interest a lot of kids and get young people involved, keep them occupied during this, you know, summertime when maybe there aren't as many activities as typically available to them so that they have interests that are very broad and very hopefully exciting and interesting to those young people. COVID cases in our region now are up to just under 20. Supposedly, we have 10 in Rockbridge County, 6 in Buena Vista, only three here in Lexington, no confirmed hospitalizations. As the mayor indicated, we have just under 100, excuse me, just under $650,000 in CARES funds that we do have available to us, and those dollars are provided without need for reimbursement. If we don't spend them, we have to return them to the state by the end of December or just after the end of December. There are many restrictions in place as to how those funds can be utilized, but there are some opportunities nonetheless for us to utilize those for costs that are directly related to COVID-19, things that are not already in our budget. That type of, and they can't replace revenues as well. So those are the type of general restrictions that are in place, but there are a number of others. We are reviewing that guidance already, staff and I, with our legal counsel. I've met with virtually city managers and county administrators up and down the Shenandoah Valley. BML, VACO, Government Finance Officers Association, we're all trying to figure out exactly how those funds can be used. And since we have until December of this year to use them, we don't have to rush into it now. Some of the things that we'd like to do or could do, there is an immediacy to that. Again, fixtures in our bathrooms, touch free, that is. Door, doors that open automatically. We'll better serve the public. We'll have a safer environment if we can put those in as soon as possible. But again, all those things will just have to be considered in due time. The Enfield Road Water Tower Site Development, that is still an ongoing project. Obviously, it was delayed because nothing could go through the courts for a number of weeks. Now that court's activity has resumed, unfortunately, there's a big logjam of activities, so we still don't know how soon that may get through the courts. Last I spoke with the developers who are interested in that property, again, they are interested and still would like to proceed as soon as possible. So I think both areas of good news for us regarding development in our community. There are individuals, corporations who are still very interested. We received an email earlier this week, sort of a surprise, a positive surprise, that we've been selected or pre-selected as a possible site for electric vehicle charging station. As a result of the settlement of the Volkswagen Diesel lawsuit some, some time back, they are funding electric vehicle charging stations here in the Commonwealth. And being that we're located on I-81 and I-64, we're pretty ideally located so that commuters going up and down the East Coast on I-81 or west to east on I-64 could use us as a charging station. This is free for 10 years, and what we have to provide are 68 charging spots, that is parking spots in a lot, preferably downtown. Arnie is working with the involved parties to determine which spaces might be best for us to use. We're not committed to this, but obviously, over a 10-year cycle, I think we all anticipate electric vehicles will become more commonplace. There's a lot to be said for using electric vehicles as the technology improves. And again, based on our geographic location, we could have people stopping overnight in the community, spending the overnight, charging their car and, you know, buying hotel rooms and having dinner. So aside from perhaps serving our own vehicles and our own citizens' vehicles. Jeff and his crew at Public Works are working with the Historic Lexington Foundation to consider renovations and repairs to memorials in the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Their, the memorials are historic in nature, and they have been damaged or being identified by Historic Lexington Foundation. We are not committed, the city is not committed to restoring those memorials. That'll be either a family expense or Historic Lexington Foundation is looking at funding they can make available. However, we are coordinating, cooperating when it comes to dealing with the landscaping on the sites, overgrown trees and landscaping, and some of the other physical characteristics that may need to be improved or changed in order to accommodate the restoration of those memorials. Lastly, Deb and I have found a place here in Lexington to rent. We're looking at a house on Walker Street, and we hope to be in there by August 1. Obviously, we'd like to purchase, but we still have not sold our home in South Boston. So one step at a time, we're a little closer. We're very excited. We're very excited and I want to say I'm sorry that it took as long as it did. But there were other, other things that just interfered or delayed the process. But we're very pleased to be moving here into the city very soon. And that's my report.
Thank you, Jim. Too bad there's not much going on in the city.
It's an exciting time and a lot of good things are happening despite the challenges we face.
Indeed. Any questions for the city manager?
One.
Go ahead, Chuck.
No, you go ahead.
Chuck, go ahead.
One question regarding the CARES funding that's available to us. Does that have to be spent by the end of the year or does it have to be committed to projects by the end of the year?
It has to be spent by what we've all seen at this juncture. Now, we could receive additional guidance between now and that period. That would give us a little more flexibility. I don't really hold out a lot of hope for that from what I am hearing. But nonetheless, we are trying to seek whatever guidance we can. But right now, it needs to be spent by December 31st.
And not, not proposed, but actually out the door spent. Leslie?
Not in any rush, but where does the Jordan's Point study stand? Have we just put it on hold and told the consulting firm just to hold off for a while?
I have lost track of that, honestly. I don't know if Arnie is still with us now. He might know, but that hasn't been on my radar the last week or two. So I'll have to investigate and get back with you on that. My apologies.
If I could, the LPDA did provide the final draft to me this week. Send it around to various staff members for comment, get it back to LPDA.
Thank you, Arnie.
And it gives us a good time this summer to, you know, to see how that area is used. Because I think it's going to be well-used, particularly with the city pool not being open. Might inform the plan some.
And could have some COVID restrooms or COVID-related.
COVID-related background?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Creativity at its best. Very good. Any other questions for the city manager on his report? Hearing none. Next item is 13.2, Consideration of the Fiscal Year 21 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. I'll start by saying, Jim, thank you. It's been a long, strange, what a long, strange trip it's been. To quote, I think, the Grateful Dead. And I'm grateful to you and your team, but especially to council for pausing and getting input. I think we all feel much better about the direction we're going and the decisions we're making with the contacts you made with the agencies and the extra effort that everyone's put in on this budget that Lord only knows where we'll end up next year on our revenues. So thank you to you and your team. Greatly, greatly appreciated. And.
Well, you're welcome, Mr. Mayor. And it's been, it's been a good effort. And even though it's been difficult, I found it very meaningful working with you, the entire city council, the city staff who work tirelessly along with me and our local partners, including the different agencies and entities that we either fund or participate with to provide services to our community. Everyone's been very positive and we've done the best we could, I believe, under the circumstances. Not what we wanted to do, but because of the positive can-do attitudes and coming to work and trying to get the best out of this situation, I feel we've done well and it's been very meaningful. I've, at a certain level, enjoyed it because of the work and the bonds that we've all formed, I think, trying to deal with this, this serious difficulty. I don't really have much more of a presentation. We discussed it at the work session. We've discussed it previously. Asking and recommending that city council approve the budget and the capital improvement plan for FY '21. The only thing I would note, Mr. Mayor, is we did receive a, an email from Ms. Sheridan with the Rockford Area Health Center, a comment about funding for her agency that she wanted to make sure that you, as council members, all saw. I think I, I think you have a copy of that or maybe Janie can put that up on the screen, please.
Good work, Janie.
And you can see that Ms. Sheridan just wanted to share that he's hopeful that when things turn around and.
And I would say, go ahead, if you will, as that's presented, just read that into the record, please.
Sure, I will certainly do that. Thank you for the phone call yesterday. I appreciate the budget difficulties facing our local governments during this COVID-19 period. I understand from our phone conversations that the City of Lexington is intending to cut all nonprofit funding from the budget. I'd like to clarify that's discretionary agencies, not all nonprofits, but discretionary agencies. This must be a very hard course of action for the council members to consider. I imagine there are some lively conversations. As a provider of healthcare services, especially for the most vulnerable in our community, Rockbridge Area Health Center is designated as an essential business. We are in the process of planning for a COVID testing program. We have been fortunate to receive some funding dedicated for COVID operations. I think so, I think this will be a great service to the community. However, there's still the work of caring for the community's everyday healthcare needs. We have provided over 4,000 visits since COVID restrictions started. I encourage you to keep Rockbridge Area Health Center in your budget in some small way, if there's any way possible. In the, if the budget demands are simply too great, then please commit to adding the health center back into your budget when you reevaluate this later in the year. And that's from Suzanne Sheridan, who is the Chief Executive Officer of the center.
Thank you, Jim. Janie, do we have any other communiques from folks?
I don't have anything else.
Terrific. Thank you. For the recommendation from the city manager and his staff and asked for your consideration of fiscal 20-year, fiscal year 21 budget and capital improvement plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 21 budget and capital improvement plan as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for the second. Any discussion?
I just have one comment. I just want to echo what Chuck and Frank said. I'm really impressed, Jim, with all the effort that you put into contacting the outside agencies the way you did. And, and, you know, and just generally all the work that went into this budget. It's really impressive and I'm really grateful to both you and your staff for all the work that you've done here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I also add to what Dennis said? Dennis hit it on the head, obviously, but, but like us pausing the last two weeks, I think, did make an impression to, to promote transparency in the community. Some of the comments that I received, while they were understanding, people have strong opinions and we value them about recycling or about funding the discretionary agencies. And by us at least pausing two weeks, it did give us the opportunity to hear those comments, take them into consideration. Ultimately, we're approving the budget as presented with some hard cuts possibly necessary. But we're also making the commitment to revisit the budget in the fall and maybe in the spring if revenues improve. And so thanks to each of fellow council members and then to Jim and his staff and all the department heads. Because this is a heck of a budget, heck of a long process, but, but as, as good as can be, given the center's circumstances.
Thank you, David.
It's funny, we say all this every year, how about how much we support staff and, and council and everything that everyone's doing to get through this process. But this year was especially troublesome and terrifying. So to that end, I'll ditto what everybody else has said. Thank you.
Chuck?
Yeah, it's been a rough time for, for staff in City Hall. And things, even though they look dire right now, with the report that Gary gave about some of the revenue coming in, I'm optimistic. So I'm hoping that when we revisit, we'll be able to do things a little bit more generously.
Thank you, Marilyn. Yeah, certainly look forward to a list of priorities from the restoration, should we find ourselves in that wonderful situation. Situation of not being as bad as we think. Anyone else before we have a roll call vote? Very good. Roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strong? Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Drairs?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good work and look forward to July 1st and see what in the world happens as it unfolds. Thank you, Jim. Anything else for the good of the cause from your perspective?
No, sir, but thank you, city council, mayor.
Thank you. Next, city attorney, Jared.
Evening, everyone. Just a brief addendum to Jim's comments on the Enfield Road Water Tower projects. The courts have opened up for non-emergency civil cases starting this past Monday. As he said, there is a logjam and we're working to get things scheduled. In the midst of that, there is a, another unexpected twist. A new attorney will be getting involved in the, the next couple of days, hopefully, no more than a week or so. So that person will certainly need time to get up to speed. The good news is there hasn't been a ton of substantive progress made. So there, there won't be a ton of new information that that person needs to digest. But that, whoever that ends up being, will certainly need some time to get up to speed before they're willing to agree to set a date for a trial. So another unfortunate delay unexpectedly, but certainly nothing that I or the city can control. And it remains a priority to get that moving as soon as possible. And I'll certainly keep council updated if and when, when we do finally get a date set. And that's all I have to report.
So Jared, Rusty's obtained a different attorney?
I believe that Kent Gibson, who was representing him, took over legal aid. Blue Ridge Legal Aid, so he would not be able to present him, so may withdrew from the case.
Thank you.
Correct. That's my understanding as well.
Very good. Very good. And that's, that's if you're reporting. Anybody have any questions, council members? Hearing none. Thank you, Jared, and thank you for being with us and guiding us through. Not aware of any new business. We certainly covered a lot of topics, lots of proclamations and lots of financial matters. And it's a thrill to work with all of you. And I'm proud of the great work that this council's doing as we work towards the conclusion of 2020, budget year anyway. And unless anybody has anything else for the good of the cause, we will stand adjourned and wish Janie a good night, it looked like there. Glad she could join us. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
Night all. Thank you.
Good night.